We definitely have people with good attitudes. For whatever reason, we've been very blessed in the fact that the people that are hired at this bank are kind of expected to be nice to each other. And we have a lot of customers that walk in and just say that they came in and they loved the fact that they could tell that we truly were happy.
Before we get started with the official meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Eads if he would introduce a guest here who has a little announcement for us, sir.
Well, Reverend Greg Pride has asked to come by and tell us about an event that he's planning this weekend?
Well, sir, it's a step up a lot closer.
Well, tell us about it.
Basically, thank you. Thank you all for letting me come and listen to me. I want to keep it long. Basically, thanks off your being here. We have a back in June to Phoenix City of Texas on October 27th. And we have health fair and the American Black Party. So my basic theory for the health fair is health fair on the city, the whole city being involved in. So the whole city involved being that I figure I come to City Hall and get ideas. While a lot of buses to pick up people in the park, you know, homeless folks, folks who were on insurance or folks who dying out, you know. And we had an event in Martha's MLK Park at October 27th, 10 to 4:00. 10 to 4:00 October 27th.
27?
27.
Good Saturday.
Yes, sir. As I say, pray for some, pray for some good weather. So I have several doctors that are also involved. And I contacted a lab in town, the PPL lab in town, and they'll do all of our health care screening for us. And they will donate all the equipment and everything I need. So what I basically needed is bodies. And so, you know, with advertisement, you know, different things, people may not show up. But I figured we'd go get them and bring them to the park because a lot of folks out there need help, won't show up. If we bring them in, then they will probably show up. So I was basically trying to see if we can swap ideas on how to get people to do that. Maybe if we could pick them up, you know, put you all thing.
Reverend, since we've got a little lead time, why don't we take these ideas and kind of see how we can be supportive and get back together again. And we can just have a meeting with Commissioner Eads and sit down and talk about how we can assist.
Okay, sure.
Can you give us just a quick synopsis of what, like, are you going to have doctors there?
Yes, ma'am. I have, right now I've got six doctors, Dr. Dove, Dr. Bratter, Dr. Schirr, Dr. Bridges, Dr. Tendo, and Dr. Cuthbert, she might be there as well. And yes, I work enough with, been up 20 years.
You run.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you were there.
Correct.
How I met you.
I know.
He's been, he's been our star of the year before.
That's right. I mean, yeah. So I've got the nurses on board as well. And, you know, and I said, I got a layup. PPL, that's the physician, physician preferred laboratory. So I got the layup and everything. Basically, I need to meet the peoples, you know, because I want everybody to be there and people don't show up.
Okay.
So, sir.
Do you all have Greg's number? Do you have?
Oh, I have it. Everybody has.
And what we guess, we can talk about how the city can assist. And then before the event, perhaps we can do some kind of a promotional issue out during the general meeting or before the event.
I think it'll be surprising if people will show up.
Good for you, Greg.
Well, the next weekend is the big free dental clinic.
Good for you.
The state association is having here in Amarillo. The state's already lost that.
Sure. So what's a student involved in our thing we can do a great work to be a great accomplishment, you know? I mean, all credit goes to Lord Jesus Christ, you know what I mean? I'm not trying to get him arrested or nothing, just that we need, people need help and, you know, and we need to do it. And we're why so late because take time to get everything together. I want to head through it, you know, lots of hope to LULAC, spending chambers of commerce, get them all involved in it, you know, get all the churches in town to, you know, have science for that, you know, let people know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator.
We'll do it. I'll be back in a minute.
Okay, sir. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
Good to see you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the meeting then. Turn the meeting over to the city manager to go through the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could, we'll pick up where we stopped last week with reviewing some of the component unit budgets. We have three of them today, representatives of all three districts of the district. For the Emerald Hospital District, we'll bring you all up. Mr. Frigo, Mr. Grant. Everybody should have their copy of that.
I don't want this to go on the air. And Marcus.
Not that it'll be an important day.
It's been set on his calendar since '95.
Gentlemen.
2011, 2012 budget has been approved by the Board of Managers, the Emerald Hospital District. For y'all's approval, yes. I think the first page, if there are any consent from the head, the first page, right there in the middle of it is the proposed budget for the main corpus. And then deal off to the far right is the proposed budget for the tobacco funds that we receive. It's not very large amount of money anymore, unfortunately, just declining the attitude. Budget's pretty simple for the hospital district, especially on the revenue side. Our very tight and conservative investment guidelines don't give us a lot of leeway for what we do as funds.
Pretty restrictive.
Pretty restrictive, so we're pretty much dictated what kind of revenue we receive off the corpus of the hospital district funds.
The interest rates have been so high. You'd have to be knocking down 10, 12, 13.
Unfortunately, you probably can see it as you look down at the bottom of that, you can see the excess of revenues or expenditures. It's a negative number of $3,249,000 for the proposed budget here, 2011, 2012. And that is a direct result of the investment returns to the corpus. The major expenditure, of course, is the required distribution that we give to Universal Health Services to deliver the indigent care services, the hospital district. And you can see that number there in the indigent care contract, $5,286,000. The other major expenditures are the pension contribution. The hospital district sold the hospital to NHS, we acquired to keep the pension plan for the 20 more employees. And we have to make a contribution every year. You can see that number, $2 million.
Greg, can you take me through the history of what happened from poison control? I see that number's dropped off. It's been right below a professional services. The number's gone from $89,000 to $1,328,000. What has caused that?
In the last session of the legislature, the Poison Center was transferred to Texas Tech.
Okay.
So we were contracting with Tech, so it was just a conduit. So they just got us out of the middle. And then we were funding the pediatric support contract out of tobacco funds. See, in the current year, it was $1,474,000. But when we ran out of tobacco funds, we pushed it back into the corpus.
Okay. But now the $1,300,000 reflects the drop in poison moved over there as a contract service or is that, what is the?
Are you talking about the professional services?
Yeah, professional services.
That's where we picked up the pediatric services and went to the, to the operating budget instead of the tobacco budget.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Excuse me.
Now, the other bright spot is if you look at indigent care, we've dropped from 5.9 million to 5.3 million in the contracts for 6.9 million. But we've been prepaying that and they're discounting it when we prepay it. So the only bright spot is we would be paying 6.9 million.
No, we might be paying around 20 million.
What's it there about why indigent care is gone? What? There's a formula?
Because we pre, we owe them 6.9 million a year.
Oh, yeah?
But we paid through 2014.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So they discount it.
So there's no less indigent care going on?
No.
No, there's more at the moment. That's a hell of a deal. To get indigent care, take care of the $5,500.
Wonderful. As Commissioner Simmons alluded to, it's not really a direct budget consideration, but I think it'd be remiss if we didn't have the contract expires in 2021. And anybody who's studied this for very long can see that if we're able to even secure a bit for the indigent care, it will be quite a bit more money than what we're paying now. And while that is 10 years away, that 10 years will go very fast. It's something that I would need to be starting conversations about.
I thought that our president, on the side, was going to take that long.
That could, that could affect us very dramatically. But you might remember, Jim, that Universal has a, an option to renew this. And so even if we went to Universal Care, we would still have to keep paying possibly.
Three or five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? That's when they make the other losses.
The option, it's a unilateral option to extend the contract 15 years, and UHS has that option.
What's the, excuse me? What's the escalator?
CPI.
That's anything now.
No, it froze after, I think it was eight years in the contract, it froze.
So if federal aid supplanted that, you'd still have to pay it.
I'll defer to legal.
That's the concern, that it was, that it is a contract. Now, we will not give legal advice in a public meeting, but we will be reviewing that for no anticipated national healthcare at the level that we seem to be coming through, assuming the courts don't toss it out or Congress.
There's so many triggers yet to come in that healthcare act of 14, it's more than difficult to try to plan this past the end of each successive year.
But I totally agree with Greg that we can't wait till year 2020. So.
Oh, yeah. Here it comes.
Yeah.
What's the difference? What's the difference between the next two pages, 9210 and the 9210-0? There's two different budgets and we've got a little different numbers. They don't really.
9210 would be the, the hospital corpus and 9211, I think, is tobacco. Who was it?
Well, it's 92100.
What are you talking about? The detailed numbers. The 9210, I believe, is a roll-up budget, Mayor?
Yeah.
That has them both in it?
Yeah, 9210 is a roll-up, thank you. 9210, 92100 and 110, 100 is corpus and 110 is tobacco.
Okay. So where the, on the fifth line down where it says $979,000 federal grant in '08, that's all disappeared?
Yeah, that was mainly Poison Center. After it was Poison Center.
So then the Poison Center down below is showing $366,000 plus, and the next, see that's disappeared too.
Well, there's, there's a number there, 112, that adds it up almost.
Right, right.
But it was just a conduit.
We contracted with Texas Tech to run the Poison Center. So whatever grant money we got, we forwarded to Texas Tech.
And the Poison Center will stay in place for the next year, two years, if you please. Let's get their funding directly now.
Okay.
I got you. Okay, anybody got any questions?
Good job.
Greg, any recommendations on kind of what we should do for 2021? Do you want to just?
You want to?
You've got 30 seconds.
I serve at y'all's discretion.
Whoever happens to be here.
Are you going to hang in there while we just make that decision or are you going to escape here?
That's going to be a tough one. Jim alluded to a number and I don't know that that's too far off. That $20 million number may be very accurate if you go to Universal Care. And obviously, that corpus of that will not be able to handle that. You can surmise that.
Yep.
Well, and this further speaks to the importance of the work that the men and the women on that board do for y'all. And that will get more and more important, probably for a year.
Good job.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
You are a word for sitting in Bob Stafford.
Thank goodness. Yeah, I'll be a great addition to the board, no doubt about it. Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Appreciate it.
You're up.
I share your pain.
I would do like always, turn it over to our mouse here to put everybody in on any question.
We do the same thing.
I know you do. You talk back to nothing.
Well, when we're doing the venue district budget, the first thing we do is calculate how much money we're going to need for debt service. And that's the very first page you have there. We've got a debt service payment next year of $1,105,370. And we're going to need to transfer $978,912 from, again, the corpus of money for the debt service. So we begin the year on debt service with $756,000. We'll have $979,000 in revenue. We'll make $1,105,370 payment and we'll end with $734,123. And why do I end with that number? We have to make the principal payment in November, so I've got to have $733,984 in November to make principal payment. And that's where I set the estimate at. Then if you'll go two pages in, well, let's make it three. We'll just get to the next year's proposed budget. It's in small print.
Oh, yeah, very small.
Yeah. The venue district's doing very well. We estimate we'll have $2,132,000 in revenue. And if you'll remember, our debt service is about a million, so we have a two to one coverage. It's a real strong coverage. We'll spend on the ANC management fee, $264,000. That's to help offset the loss of the ANC at the fairgrounds. And then for the civic center, almost $298,000 to offset the loss of the civic center portion. The venue district owns a portion of the civic center that's attached to the portion the city owns. For event development, we're looking at $150,000. These are for events at the ANC. And Virgil knows them all by heart.
Virgil.
Glenn, sorry. And Virgil does too. The contingencies would be for contingencies at the ANC. And then we have $156,000 for civic center improvements.
And again, spent only in that portion of the civic center that was funded by the venue district.
I remind them, this is not parking tax.
Oh, point taken. It's a 2% hotel tax and a 5% short-term car rental tax that funds this operation.
And what is encompassed when you think like?
Mainly repairs on the buildings.
So an air conditioner outside that is kind of expensive.
Yes, they are. And I invite you to go to the fairgrounds, they've made a lot of improvements.
It looks good with all the old buildings being torn down.
We're getting there slowly, but surely. All this event development, I explain that to you, you probably know, $150,000. You know, when a bit comes to town, they don't come say, I like you because you have nice streets, nice loops. But they say, how much you don't get? That's what they say. Because those $50,000, this big hack show, just AQH, just finished Sunday, that's the biggest show we have. Funny deal about that, years ago, these are, we came out, all of our books, make sure we spend our things, she said, we're trying to up our management fee because we, you know, it costs a ton to run a building, it's like this, this building we're in right here as far as utilities goes, insurance. Anyway, she said, you know, what you need to do is get more events. I said, would you like to be on our doors? We'd love to have you. She didn't take me up on it, but anybody. But research all the time for events because we have competition laws on the city for work. I mean, Tulsa just finished a really new center. Paul, you've been out there, just reached this.
Yeah, I was. In fact, I heard a comment from the lady that was attending the horse show, she was from Georgia, and she said, just a few more things out there and be a world-class center. What is she, what was she referring to?
Well, one thing, for example, these shooters, you know what that means? That's these people that ride horseback and shoot balloons. That sounds like a kid's story, but it's, it's quite, quite a deal. And it comes up, they see what's going to be, you need to go out there and just watch. It's kind of like watching Tino. After about 30 minutes, you get the order and you go do something else. What is it?
Yeah, but they're really good. I mean, every year, it's the first time in two years ago.
Glenn, to help my memory, wasn't this when we first got it, the Bayer celebrity?
Yeah.
The Bayer aspirin people.
Yeah, I knew the, this, that's a heck of a mess.
I can't pronounce it.
Adacron, A-D-E-T-U-A-N, that's some kind of drug, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I think they manufactured that drug also, but Bayer was easier to say.
And Ryan literally needs.
Well, I saw the, last, your paper, you took an apple there, it said million, leave our chest, I just kept, his millions rolled in. But getting back to your question, the shooters, we've got a warmer in there. Of course, we've got a bigger inside the chutzpah, but they said, we need a bigger place to warm up. And their contract ends this year. We said, well, tell you what, we'll add 50 feet to it if you don't give us a five-year contract. So they're thinking about that now, but it's just things like that. When people come in and say, well, I wish you had this or that, this was covered. You know, we keep making agreements every year, I mean, we're getting there.
More stalls? Do they have, it has to be a covered area to warm up?
And you're a horse.
They prefer, yes. And this, this already covered, we're just, we're just going to extend it 50 feet. We've already got that, what they call a tonic rant building.
See, the building's been nice, little.
I didn't hear that. Ask Manny Betten.
I don't think so. Parking for big trains, RVs.
Oh, that's another thing, too. Hotel people, that's the arch, you know, but we try to do it because they, they're paying for it. So we try to, you know, give all, do them all good as we can. Because they came out, these big shows, they saw these big rigs out there, you know, hauling horses worth $200,000 fees, they say, well, they can order home. I said, you come out here about dark, see where they are. They use that for a break room, they go stay in the hotel at night because they, they report it.
Or their trainer stays there and they go.
Exactly.
They need big stuff.
I think, I think, you wouldn't leave with the cattle shows for getting, Virgil was digging cattle before he came, he was running the fairgrounds. Those cattle shows, hopefully, he was coming here and three, four times, pick up the trailer on cattle. So they've got to go somewhere to stay. But they, they're good, they got two, two cattle shows this year, the Herbert and the Limousine.
John Treadway drove me past one, he says, that one's a million two. And I said, well, that's a pretty nice trailer behind. He said, well, the trailer's $350,000.
Oh, it blows your mind to see, because, and these people are 50 and over.
Yeah.
You know, so they, they got the money.
Good show.
God bless.
Lot of people.
But I'd let me time, if you, where they look, you think, Ryan Howard, I'll dig that and give you all the tour.
It's worth the tour.
I've been a lot of hours out there. My daughter, I love her years and years.
Really?
I love that so.
Well, you know what it's all about. That was the first building we built out there in 1973.
And I learned the limousine was a breed of cattle.
Paulson.
Yeah, same way.
Separate from the car that brings him to the office.
I kept looking through a car show.
Well, I got this internship, I told him, I said, take one thing, we're going to keep our search clean all the way, so if he answers a question, we can go everywhere. And the greatest guy here, he stayed on us all the time.
Dean, back on the detail, how did we go from 08 zero expenditure now we contract those services for management?
Oh, we split it. It was in the operating, if you look at operating, it was 507,000.
Okay.
And then we, we split it by both to keep track of each facility.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Good work, Mr. D.
You bet. Thanks, Steve. Do you want to get it down, Mayor? Y'all have any questions, comments?
Good job.
Well, thank you.
We go through all the work.
By the way, there's one of those buildings out there this name.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
You're all doing a good job, too.
Okay, thanks.
It's over.
Bye.
Should we do it?
I'll list everything else you're doing.
I'll have one more if you'd like.
I'll use mine when I have to.
Mayor, we have Les Simpson and Melissa Daly here for our last component budget of the day.
Welcome.
Thanks, appreciate it.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Well, Melissa's going to kind of go over some things here in just a second, but on behalf of the Board of DAI, we again appreciate the partnership that we have with the city. And I think we have accomplished a lot in the last year.
You think?
Appreciate your support of it. We would not have been able to do it without, without the support of the previous commission and this, and this commission as well. And obviously, we appreciate the financial support. Hopefully, you feel like you're, you're getting your money's worth out of what we're doing and we're ready to continue. There's still lots of work left to be done. I think, you know, one of the more significant things that was a difference in our contract from this past year was your request to us to kind of handle the public relations aspect and the information sharing aspect of what is happening with downtown. And I think as, as Melissa will kind of go over that, I think, I think we've done that and will continue to do that. And I think that was really a crucial part of the success. Not something that we were originally tasked to do. I mean, as we, as the organization has evolved, that's changed, but, but we were glad to do that and we're planning to continue to do that with whatever's going on in downtown. But that, I'll turn it over to Melissa.
Well, since I just saw you here, I had a hard time coming up with a list, but I just kind of list off some of the highlights. And I know you know a lot of what we do, of course, but we do so many different things, some of them may not be on your radar screen, that I just thought I'd kind of take those on. Aside from the civic center project, which I'll get into, but we worked a lot on the pedestrian lines, we're through the city staff and Excel and TechDOT on the pedestrian line design, as well as the TechDOT lighting and how, and can't believe how many hours, but to really appreciate the city's work, especially Mickey's and Kelly's work on that. Still working with the city on the civic center needs assessment. I reviewed approximately 20 design standards cases with Kelly. And in particular, some of the bigger ones, Potter County and Happy State Bank Marriott, Old Street United Methodist Church, 911 PR, you can see all those walkway cases, the first ones to come up. And I'll say, too, there's been no appeals, as far as I know, from staff or from the design review board. I think Kelly's done a great job in working with the property owners to create a win-win situation for downtown and the property owner. Of course, the DAI board meetings, the family corporation meetings, the tiers meetings, countless stakeholders regarding this non-federated, particularly with those conversations we're going on about the election coming up, a lot of questions and wanting clarification on what those were and how they worked. Met with approximately 600 people in about 60 days about individual and small group meetings. Had days of series of meetings, every hour on the hour to explain, you know, what it was we were trying to create downtown. As Les said, a lot of communication was now reaching, that was a big, big, big focus over the last year. We held six public meetings outside of City Hall on downtown, plus four neighborhood meetings in Cleveland Zekel, and countless individual meetings with folks to give them information on downtown and get feedback. We did press releases and press pack gifts, social media, completed our website, we continually update that, the city's website is linked into that as well. And it pretty much has everything downtown, all the presentations that we've given publicly, all the plans, the renderings, you can find everything we've done on that website. the renderings, you can find everything we've done on that website. We have a Facebook page, Twitter page, many of you went to the trips that we do, we did two trips to the Metroplex and then to Sugarland, which was what they had done, talked to some of the experts there. Still working on the Liberty Theater and exploring potential uses and, and funding sources for that, our little project that could, a big project that could, still working on the Barfield, and trying to move that forward. Had meetings with some of the city staff, as well as TABC on downtown security issues. I gave seven presentations to various, like Reverend Quan and so forth that requested those, and then we began exploring public improvement district, we've already done some of the preliminary work on that, talking to the board of how those work and what the parameters are and the process. And then, of course, the Civic Center project, which you're all familiar with, but I just kind of ticked off some of the highlights, we've completed the development contract in LA, completed the Ballpark, the building study, established the LGC, selected the architectural team and operators, evaluation of the hotel site, completed land plan, the architectural rendering, completed the final report, started with utilities coordination, began working with a couple of fifty million, other little details, so that's it. In a nutshell, those are the highlights. And, you know, of course, we all approved moving forward on that project, and we've already begun subsequent work, in fact, Jolly will be here tomorrow to do those discussions.
I have one, one question, give me an example of, there's fifteen thousand for this project, strategic action plan, implementation plan, give me an example of that.
Well, what we used that for previously was, we had a housing study, we did a housing study, we did a land use parking study, and we did a street skate study, and the tier stuff we did with our own that we had, as did Center City, so that will help us, there's three projects.
That's the way finding?
Yes.
So that's what you're talking about?
And it won't fund all those, but it'll help to go forward then.
I think, I think what, what we kind of have on our radar, wanting to do as quickly as we can, whether that'll be with this thing here or not, is, is going through and working on the due diligence for public improvement district, all the work, and there's a lot of manual labor that goes into that and that, and you look at a lot of different things, but that's one thing. The circulation study that looks at downtown traffic patterns and especially as we go forward, I mean, a lot of these things we did last, you know, in the last year, twelve to eighteen months, were things that just helped set the table for what we eventually wound up doing, were things that had to be done in studying, whether it's housing or baseball or whatever it may be. I think a circulation study is one of those things that will need to be done, you know, because there's probably gonna be some short-term and long-term issues as we go forward on downtown traffic circulation and how those things work, and what do we need to do to make it more pedestrian-friendly, I think is gonna be one of the keys, so that we can all coexist together. And then the, the third area is the, the wayfinding, which is, and, and you know, you think, boy, this is, you know, is it difficult to do or whatever, well, it's not difficult, it's just time-consuming, and that's, you know, particularly, I think, as we develop and get on this first part of the Civic Center project, to better utilize all the parking in the downtown, not just what's for the Civic Center, I mean, people know where that is, but throughout the area, to work with people who own those parking lots, because a lot of places now, they think if it's mine, it's twenty-four hours a day, even though it may only be used eight hours a day, and so we need to work with them to find out whether the parking may be available, as well as putting signs on there, so people know, I can park here during these times, I can't park here during these times, and looking at those issues. Because again, what people don't realize, I think, is the number one land use downtown is parking, there's plenty of parking, we just had to figure out how to manipulate it and use it where it's used more than just eight hours a day, where it can be used twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours a day for different kinds of things, and so looking at that, so those are some things that will, we don't have, you know, with the money that we're having, the city will be able to do part of it, you know, our board is talking about what we would like to do, but we'll probably look at trying to find some other funding to go ahead and do these other projects, because we think, the sooner we get them done, the better off we'll be as we're working on these other pieces.
I think what those three projects do, a couple things, one is to help ensure that the Civic Center area projects are successful, so it's not enough just to build, but you've got to make sure that downtown is secure, it's safe, clean, maintained, and, and that people don't get towed, that they can come downtown easily, find parking, understand what's public, what's not public, that's where the wayfinding comes in, and just have a good experience downtown. But, you know, I think as Les said, these, these planning initiatives do help us move, not just the Civic Center project, but downtown forward, and, you know, I think the most, best example, the first time I sat down with Wallace Majoly, the first time I met Wallace and Joe Ash, I had the land plan, the draft land plan that we had begun working on here locally, and said that, this is, this is our vision, this is what we want to achieve, and they were very impressed by that, that they, that you were moving down that path with Liki. So it gives you a tool, you know, to, to implement, and for example, the wayfinding, that will be design services, that of course isn't enough for implementation, but will have that design where if private property owners, for example, have a lot that they're willing to provide for public parking, I might be able to, they might be willing to put up that sign that consisted in design with the others, or there are grants for that, state grants, federal grants that provide for funds, and should that come, become available, have the design to use for it.
Is your major and maybe only, form of communication to the general public about what's happening, the progress made, and maybe some, like what's happening with the Barfield building or with the theater you're talking about, the website?
It's really all of that, I mean, it's from the website, I mean, different things appeal to different people, so it's website to individual meetings, to public meetings, to working with the media, providing information, the press releases, time to that, that you know that this is going on, so it's trying to use all possible medium, if, if somebody just called me and said, I wanna, I get these all the time, I wanna know what, what is going on downtown, I'll go meet them, so it's just kind of whatever opportunities are there.
So you foresee more public meetings?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the next step for that on the big scale will become the Civic Center stuff. Start here, please.
Civic Center?
Civic Center? Physically, the Civic Center?
That's the next public, series of public meetings.
Well, we want, you know, as we go through the design process, we want to do public meetings on that, it's more than just perfunctory public meeting, we have to do, you know, it's a meeting outside of City Hall to get feedback, not just hear what we want to do, but let us know what you think, take that feedback back. And, you know, inevitably, out of those public meetings, then comes other meetings, they say, will you come talk to my group, or can you sit down with me and explain this in more detail, I understand this. So it's, it's beyond just having a, you know, public meeting and giving the direction.
We invite the design of the impad, for instance?
Well, we get into construction documents, what you've seen is just a conceptual design, very, very conceptual, so we get into design detail, and there may be some minor changes, and certainly some more specific design that people will be able, I mean, I think the conceptual design you approved in its concept, in the siding, the siding of the, of the facilities, but we get into more detailed design.
And I think one of the things that came out, I can't remember, but when we were having these meetings before, you know, we said, when you, you know, this was to the public, what do you want this to look like, what do you think is iconic, or what would you want it to look like, and then I guess they, you know, pretty much historically, I guess, was the, the Cobble building, it was kind of that, so it was trying to gain, you know, input and feeling of appeal that you wanted to have, and what do you think is something, you know, that we should be able, you know, to be able to adapt from that.
We gave each of the groups a stack of images, which they laid out at the tables, of the images that are here downtown, as well as other hotels, and input images for them to be able to pull from, and that gave us a concept of what these facilities could look like, that they're very conceptual, and we'll get into more detail and present that to the public.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions? We appreciate all of your work and your effort, we can't even account for all the hours that y'all have spent on this, we appreciate it.
I think she can account for all of it. No, I think she's lost track.
I got your salary.
Ask Karma. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our component budgets. If you would like, we can have the hospital district and the Potter, Emerald Potter and Avenue District on next week, they're approved by resolution. Downtown Emerald and Center City are actually approved by contract, and we can work for those in the next two weeks. And have anyone there. As noted, what's in your proposed budget for DAI is the base request, and then that additional that they've asked for, it does not at this moment include those three specific projects, we just don't have the funding for that, although those are very valid and necessary things. I think as they've indicated in their letter, they can reach a long way towards at least one of those with what's there, but I think they'll be looking for some other assistance and rightfully so. Good question.
On some place to find them.
Emerald College, you have any of that?
No. Roger.
Write your statement.
See, we can learn from things from green, when somebody asks you, you just say no. And you don't.
On to things that are legislative, we do, too.
Mayor, with that, we, of course, have our regular meeting agenda, we can discuss this proposed city budget and associated tax rate, or we can wait until item two on the agenda, we might get both of them at the same time, if you'd like. Okay. For the regular meeting today at five, item number two, is the public hearing on your tax rate. Per the postings, the city is considering a tax rate of thirty-two point zero zero nine, this is one cent higher than your current rate, rest of this is the statutory language, it will raise more taxes, it will raise them by three point five one percent, the tax on the average home of last year is three hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents, and would be three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents under the proposed tax rate. This item is structured, Mayor, for you to call the hearing, make any explanatory comments that are necessary, that you prefer, or if you would like staff to do so, and then we open that up, and that's an opportunity for the residents of Emerald to then speak to you.
It's a no-action act.
This is no action, if you will do this tonight, we'll have the second tax rate hearing Friday afternoon, and then beginning next Tuesday, the thirteenth, is the first of two actions, but on the thirteenth, you will take a vote on the proposed budget, and follow that with a vote on the tax rate, and when you come back the twentieth, you do your final.
Okay. I think it would be important to let people know what our intention is, this is approved, what we intend to spend it, and it's pretty plain to me, from what you presented, that we're gonna take six hundred and eighty thousand dollars extra to streets, and two extra for reasonable, which is about a quarter percent.
Yeah, it's, what, two-four of the penny or a quarter would be two police officers and the associated equipment, bringing your total in the budget to twelve, and then point seven six of a penny or quarters of a penny, with that funding going for down with your overlay program, which would be roughly a fifty percent increase in the funding of the overlay program. Okay. Any questions about that?
It's more my intention in this meeting to accept comments, really, trying to absorb what people are saying, and go from there. Had a lot of discussion with people these last couple of weeks with individuals, and in my view, very high acceptance of the meaning of this, so we'll see what happens.
I think, once you explain it to people, that they're more accepting, even if they caught you to you, they were against it, because they, some people that have called me, or at least one in particular, didn't realize that he was paying taxes to four governing entities, and he, and I pointed out to him that the city was just one of four tax entities that, that he was paying taxes to, so it wasn't just the city raising the taxes, and that the city wasn't getting all the money, it was for all these other entities, and, and he didn't realize that, so.
Can we have an overhead, did you say? Maybe we have a slide?
Go ahead. I asked for a slide that would show the tax rate now, and the tax rate if this is approved, and where we stand in relation to other cities.
Good.
And we still would remain lowest, second lowest in the state, I don't exactly how high their taxes are.
Power cheat.
Correct. Still remaining six cents under, six cents under the nearest.
Eight?
Eight cents under the nearest. The risk for me, as I looked at this, was to live in Tulsa, the best example I saw was Tulsa.
Almost right, repaired.
Story I got was when they verified this, when twenty years ago, they went to a strong mayor form of government, that mayor decided to cut the funding for street overlays, kept other funding, because he did this street overlay cutting, nobody really perceived what was going on. Today, they have agreed to spend one point, now this is a counter, five hundred and ninety thousand people, so it's roughly three times our size, today, they have agreed to spend one point six billion dollars to fix their streets. Today, there's a hundred and twenty-one projects in the city, separate projects being worked on today, with that proposal, they believe that they'll be able to finish this by the year twenty twenty-one, but it will go on every year until then, because they have destroyed the base of those streets. Really, that's my argument, is that's ten times, if we took our number back, it would mean five hundred and sixty million dollars to do similar, and that doesn't really take into account the, the number of streets they have versus us, just population, so I don't know if we have ten miles of streets at least, but the fact is, I just, in my view, I don't want to ensure that we won't ever go down that path.
Ours would be seven times the cost, or more.
Well, seven to ten, I mean, Hillside, Hillside was about ten times the cost, the numbers that we received show it to be seven times the cost to replace the streets rather than.
That's this year's thing, so.
It's this year. You can see what happened there, it's an interesting, there's two clips, one from oh eight and one from now, on their website, from the news station, it shows these, it is very, interviews people, it's very, very difficult to get through Tulsa right now. I, the guy that put me onto this, comes here for a show every year, and he said, it's unbelievable, he said, you drive it in here, it is catastrophe, and I think this is inexpensive insurance to conclude that happened.
I agree.
Well, and I think that's the other thing that I can say very easily, is that there's a distinct difference in what we're doing with downtown projects versus this penny. The downtown projects, if we didn't vote to do this, could go on as we stated, and if, you know, vice versa, if we decide.
There's no connection.
There's no connection, in my mind, there's no connection, I mean, there's some.
No, in reality, there's no connection.
Well, there, you could say, you could argue that there's some monies, general fund monies being spent to do with downtown, there are, for some utilities and things like that, but we do that on every new project, we do that in Southwest Emerald, we, so, but to, to not do the taxes, we continue with everything we talked about downtown, if we weren't doing downtown, we would still need to do the taxes.
Both different parts.
Different parts.
But the other thing that's important to look at is the overlay for both streets, and they're all uptown, I mean, it's not one section of town, they're everywhere.
What's the oldest?
All the parts, say again?
The oldest one on there?
Yeah, eighty.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Most of them are over fifteen years old, but I have talked.
The newest one is nineteen ninety-nine.
I have talked to two.
Eighty-nine.
I said, probably newer, nineteen ninety-nine, that's the oldest one, I think.
But the average is, is over fifteen.
And that's cut off at ninety-nine, because they ten to twelve-year rotations, and you can't fix these, even with this extra funding, we're gonna have to do three or four years of this to be able to catch us up.
Correct.
It's not gonna happen from one year, that's why they wanna raise the rate, continue to put that money towards that. I talked to two.
Thirty or Southwest. Thirty or Southwest.
It's a material, you know, it's over parks. It's a material, you know, it's overparted town.
I talked to two street companies that build streets all over the state, and they said asphalt lasts seven to ten years. After that, the sun and the heat and everything else just starts to deteriorate. The story we're getting now is that they're more aware to the highways because of the surroundings too. And just that's, feel pretty strongly about it. And I've had good support when they're talking.
Thank you. We'll see. Any other questions about that? Move on. Mayor, item number three, order seventy-two ninety-four.
But because this is both in the presentation the way it is, we can respond to this. It's not like the public forum.
That's correct.
Back and forth conversation.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three, order seventy-two ninety-four. This is the first read, reappointing your municipal judges. And you appoint these for two-year terms. Judge Donna Clayton is your presiding judge. And then Jennifer Cates, Don Conling, and Sonia Letson work as part-time judges. That's been a very effective program. We've been able to do the evening hours and some other things using that part-time model that we really had difficulty when we had the two full-time positions. Based on the people that want to visit us, we're not even worried.
You've got a new information system in there, it's been about three, four years ago. Does that help streamline the operations?
Well, that has, and we now, that has been updated again six months ago?
Yeah, it seems longer.
All of that stuff was part and parcel of, you know, agreeing the com center and the CAD systems and all that. Now, a new program running municipal court that, warrant roundup this year was a phenomenal success. You know, during the summer, we take school liaison officers and they go knock on doors and ask people if they'd like to help us work on those warrants. Seems to be very successful.
What I did from a summer vacation.
They're drawing money. Can you pay this?
Pay your warrant.
We went to the Westmore treatment plant, I don't know, I haven't seen it.
He's going to go.
He's going after the first freeze today.
We're going to take during the first freeze.
During the first freeze.
Okay, let's move on.
Mayor, item number four, order seventy-two ninety-three. This is the second and final of the rezoning to put in place the Neighborhood Services District over here on Washington, just south of Interstate forty. Kelly, wherever you are.
No.
No changes, no comments, no questions?
I will be abstaining from that.
And the one person concerned did not show up last week.
They did not speak.
Okay.
Item number six, resolution approving the two thousand and eleven, two thousand, did I skip one?
Skip five.
I did. Item number five, resolution approving the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget for the tax incrementally investment zone number one. Budget is as reviewed last week and as recommended. Item number six, try again, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget for the Emerald Economic Development Corporation. Budget as presented and recommended last week, fully funded by the one-half cent local sales tax. Okay, any questions? Item number seven, approving the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve Convention and Visitors Council budget, also as presented and recommended from the last week's review. Questions? Oh, reason. They'll have some really hard questions on item number eight. Ms. Cody's here to help us with that. Public hearing and resolution on a two-year period, the two thousand and twelve through two thousand and fourteen goals, of the City of Emerald's disadvantaged business enterprise, or DVE, program for the Department of Transportation. This is for Transit Department. This calculates the DVE goal at forty-four point eight three. It has been published, it has been out for comment for the forty-five day period. Action under this item would be to open it for comment, should anyone choose to addresses. And then following that, to consider adopting the DVE goal by resolution. Is this the last group that we formally adopt the DVE goals for? Is Transit? It used to be common in many, many of the programs that had federal money, and I think it's down to just this one, they do that.
I'm just curious, a lot of different parameters they look at to qualify as a DVE. Because it would be amazing to me that forty-four percent is required to be spent with disadvantaged businesses, so there must incorporate a lot of businesses.
And it's kind of a roll-up of a lot of the different protect groups over the years, with the hubs historically utilized businesses, the DVEs, the disadvantaged, you have the mobs, the minority owners. It's kind of all come together. There's a lot of new language now about veteranized.
This is setting the goal in another week or two, you will have a very summary looking resolution, that we're required at best to adopt some of these program rules, I get you to this, no. They're separate actions. I was confused when they first sent it through us, I said, wait a minute, I'll just look at this. And they pointed out, no, that was the goal, and we'll be having a separate reservation for the changes to the program, the plan.
Conditions coming up? Mayor, moving to the consent agenda. Item A, this is a follow-up to the Kears project that you saw last week, for rehabilitation of Vineyard Manor property. This is the home program, real rehabilitation contract. You can see that the owner is putting in a little over six hundred and sixty-five thousand. The home program grant funds that are being added to that, five hundred thousand. Total project of a little over one point one million. This will result in sixteen units, residential units, two of which being fully ADA accessible on the ground floor at the Vineyard Manor property at twelve and twelve. We're doing this, has done some of these home projects before in the downtown area, and have an excellent job of it. Good to see that property taken, the right house, pretty much just a shell. Down you go by, you can see all the way through it.
Some of the pictures that Van had last week.
Yes, it was. Plans are really pretty unique, talking about retail downstairs and some possibilities with that that could really help.
And two units that are just a little anxious.
Two on the end of the bottom and then fourteen more. Very nice. The back space is interesting, they're knocking out sort of a wall area, so we each have porches back there. It's sort of, is that a courtyard in the back? Parking, secure parking. The parking looks a lot like the way they did the park view, where they got their nice fences, secure gate. Pretty nice.
Yeah, only half the lot, the other half, I think, is open for the retail.
Yeah, the front door is open for the retail, the back.
Looks good.
They already have people wanting to move.
They do. They're sorting through, they're sorting through what they want in there, and they're approaching people as they do that. So they're trying to define what the space would be. I've got a few ideas, but.
It'll be good.
Be good.
Mayor, if you'd like, we could look at item B. Okay. Item B is the award of a contract for the landscaping for Greenways Unit Twenty-Five Parkway. This is a contract to fully develop a linear parkway in the new portion of the Greenways. Important to note that as this ultimately will be within the Greenways Public Improvement District, this project is funded by the developer of the Greenways, who ultimately will be recreated by Public Improvement District. The cost to maintain and to operate this linear parkway into the future will be within that PIB budget and is in fact in their next year's budget. So all properly accounted for there?
Does this tie south of where it is, cover in the corner?
It's overcounted on the west side of the development.
And doesn't quite tie into the park area.
Are the Greenways all going to be interconnected? Trails and all?
They'll all be connected to the park.
They'll, they'll be connected either by side market at the very least, but you know, one of these, you can walk straight down. This one doesn't quite go all the way down. I think this is probably going to be their last one.
This was a recommendation of PIB, and then it's been.
It was competitively bid.
Were you, oh, there was? I only saw one.
Ground construction and custom gardens.
Under the top, there's two avenues.
They're the only two that clear.
Oh, I was looking at C.
Yes, and I'll be glad to.
It reminds me.
The general practice of the city with the PIBs, the improvements, whatever they may be, are being done inside the public right-of-way, even though they're being funded privately, and you own in cost, it's more privately. To ensure that what's going in is done proper and is going to last and is going to work, we do what they call three-party agreement between usually the developer, the contractor, and the city. And we also then run it through the city's bid process, so that it's out there, it's open, it walks and talks like any other project we do. Just at the end of the day, once you have made your award, the funding comes back and goes to the private party. It was a pretty good deal. Okay. No questions yet? Item C, landscape maintenance and mowing contract for the Public Improvement District. This is for the Greenways, the Columns, and Brennan Boulevard. We only had one responsive bidder on this. It was competitively bid. The other bidder had some material emissions in their bid, and thus one of them. Almost ten percent less than what's on those respective PIB budgets for the upcoming year.
And they're all asking to be conservative with water usage.
Do they reserve the extra to carry forward their future budget?
Dean and Kelly will work with those boards in that carryover, if this can reduce for the next year, or build if they're needing to build funds towards a particular group.
Do we know much water, those bids are used?
We do.
Like, they, you give it all?
So it'll take a lot of water, because most of these bids are fescue. So they, they pay for it. It's a lot of water.
So. I think they shake her some to be more.
I will say that they have all been very responsive this year to work with us, as we've had, you know, the line break. One of them had a fountain. The fountain was maybe not running at the best, you know, appropriate time, and then took a lesson today, and they had to reprogram it. So they do use the water, but they, they've been sensitive.
See, on the line speaking, they could put in the right kind of graphs, but they're in fescue.
Okay, next. Mayor, item D, emergency repair pump station rotating elements. fancy word for the interior part of the pump and the shaft that spins to push water to town. This particular one is one of three very large ones that we have out in Carson County pump station. They're running, and we're running at full power on the ones that we have, but we need this one to be repaired and put back into service as quickly as possible.
This one's on variable speedrun services.
These are not. Am I correct, Emmett?
I missed the question.
No VFDs at Carson? They're all directs?
No VFDs.
The bowl on that pump is about the size of that conference table in the mayor's office.
Part of the problem is, you can't run synchronous motors on a VFD. They're just technologically opposite. And those are synchronous motors.
Originally built in nineteen fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight?
A few things in the early forties.
Yeah, the forties and fifties are endangered species.
Item E, emergency purchase of an eight-inch portable water pump, for trailer mounted water source. I think some of y'all had the opportunity to witness the trials and tribulations.
Three out of four didn't work.
Some six-inch water pumps. One of those that ultimately didn't work was one of ours.
Yeah, we watched the long cavalcade of pumps that Sunday morning.
With your permission and understanding the seriousness of what happens when you're trying to move that two million gallons of water in a hurry, we would request your indulgence to purchase an eight-inch. This eight-inch has substantially more capacity than a six-inch pump do. This pump is also self-prime.
Self-priming, they have a whole problem with priming.
It has a mechanism to make that much easier. And I can't recall the age of the one that we have that failed, that old six.
Old blue.
There's Floyd.
They, the exact date, I don't know, but it's probably.
Need your private commissioner since supervising them and telling them how to prime them.
These old ones know how to prime. Despite expert supervision.
There to help.
This is a multi-purpose unit, it's what they call a trash pump, so it can move solids in addition to just the water, so it's useful to us for more than just water management. We can use it in sewer lift stations.
Can it move icebergs through there? Because that's what I want to see.
Imagine ice is pretty rough, boy. Mayor, item F, approving the emergency purchase of four full-size joints of forty-five-inch pipe. This again is the concrete steel cylinder pipe that we showed a couple of weeks ago, two flanges and some clamps and straps. These will be the new set of spares for that forty-five-inch Carson County line.
Boy, we were so, so, so lucky to have that. This had a white.
Well, that was the last big piece of.
Was that the original piece?
That we used?
Yeah.
No, that was.
Twenty. What was this?
How big a piece did we put in, eighteen?
Right at eighteen, it was a twenty-foot joint pipe that we used.
Yeah, eighteen feet. So what happened? Can you cut these and use them twice, or is it just always, you can't?
Could.
So you're asking why they had to be that big of a?
Why, it's thirty-two feet. The standard joint length is in that, in that lot, it's thirty-two feet.
How did we have that one that was twenty?
And then take analysis somewhere else.
Okay.
There's several more small pieces that we have, but getting to the point we need some full sizes.
And that's just the pipes and the clamps, and then the insulation is just.
That's fine.
Wow.
That's less expensive than I would have guessed.
Really?
I wouldn't have been surprised if we picked twenty thousand dollars a joint to get it here.
Instal, it's about three hundred dollars a foot.
This will be made. Hard to get it anywhere else? Item G, public health services contract for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve from the Department of State Health Services, or DISHs as they're commonly known, hundred, nearly a hundred and twelve thousand. And this is mainly our STD and TB. And this is mainly our STD and TB group.
Right.
And does have the funding for one new nursing position. TB case load is finizing.
We attribute that to regurgitation.
What are STD right doing? You know, it's still hot. Not going down.
Not going down?
Yeah.
Still hot. Up and holding.
Are you getting a higher percentage of the population tested, or is that staying about the same?
It's staying about the same. It's a matter of, you know, reaching out, touching the contacts, making sure you want to touch. And those are the ones that get tested.
Eric.
Item H, we'd ask your permission to do some upgrades to the owner vehicle that we have used primarily by the SWAT team. Little under thirty-six thousand. It's going to be funded with seized funds accounts. And the bad guys are helping us make things better for the good guys.
Protector says it's funny.
There was a footnote near the works on that one. Thanks for looking at better ways to use that vehicle or to use that vehicle.
Mayor? Item I, whether it's the purchase of water well pumps and motors. Unfortunately, you've seen this too many times this summer. Our spares are back in the hole in Carson County. Could want to buy some more spares. One note in all fairness, one of those that is out right now is one of the new ones. And we've submitted it for warranty consideration, but in the meantime, I don't want to be hung up waiting.
Overfussing.
Overfussing about. And these are actually very inexpensive comparatively speaking for pumps and motors of this size. But we had one that went out after about thirty days. So we pulled it from another one in its place and sent it off, which are like metal spares on the shelf. Like the summer, I guess, we're in like eight spares, we're in just about riding.
Counselor, can I, can I ask how we're doing just with our water?
We have water on the merchant under your.
Especially with the refill of our reservoir.
Starting to come up. The, of course, you've had a pretty good production in use. Bathing, bought a little cool and just a little wet, and will do for you. Emmett and Floyd have continued pretty much their Herculean efforts on Potter County. We have two point nine million coming to town as of yesterday and five.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Hopefully tomorrow.
I mean, we're at the three million with the three wells, subject to more testing. But five million should be on that tomorrow. Yesterday, we did two point nine actual to town from Potter County.
From Potter County.
It's the Houston Interconnect. We put it into the Carson County line. You get all the way into the pump station, we still like that connection. But it's coming off very well. Where the pumps are operating through the pump station. The three wells that do have the testing complete, providing water to the pump station. Have it packed full, all the tests required on the tanks. So we were able to initiate service actually Sunday. And through that time period that's completing a twenty-four hour period, two point nine million.
Carson County running pretty close to full speed. The real surprise this summer, at least for me, has been the old wellfields, the southwest wellfields, have really held their production better than I think they have ever. Of course, you know, we ran that somewhat lengthy project where we went in and re-drilled one here and moved one there. Took us about three years to get our, get our way through that, but appears that it's working.
I mean, yesterday's total well production was forty-eight million, highest single day total wells this year.
Roughly thirty-five out of Carson, just under three out of Potter. The remainder out of the wellfield was drilled and constructed in the late nineteen twenties.
How soon do we think Potter will be up to the twenty?
By the time it's up to full capacity, we won't run it until spring.
Okay.
We'll need to, around the end of the year.
And I'd say it's about time. And I, and although it's not our fault, I feel that there's been, nobody out there to prove so, I commend you though.
We appreciate your, we do appreciate your support. And without it, we wouldn't be where we're at today. And so it's appreciated what we've gotten and support.
Amen. And then just, just, when you look back at the summer that we've had and the problems that we've had, of course, the problems are tied directly back to what we've asked our system to do or what we forced our system to do. But it's still, it's a miracle. And the work that y'all did when that line broke, we lost roughly half of our incoming water supply. And yet, our basile toilets kept flushing, the water kept being turned on, you brush your teeth. You didn't have to boil water. I mean, it's just been a miracle. Good work. Yeah, kudos.
Three consecutive months over two point, how many billion?
Actually, four.
Four.
May, June, July, August, been over two billion. Two months out of that, and that would be July, June and July were over two point three billion gallons. Three?
Three months.
Oh, August.
August.
August hit two point three also.
Three record months.
June, July, August.
Wow.
The previous record was two point two, right, Emmett?
Two point two zero man or something like that, yeah.
We had three record-breaking that broke that record as well. Now, May didn't break that record, but it broke a May record.
It broke a May record, and this hasn't broke the record for each of those months.
The public response back in July to begin knocking down some of those peaks made a huge difference. Both the residents of Black Mill and Canyon both did. That Sunday morning is when we lost the big line. We wouldn't be in the shape we're in. The system modeling that Emmett has proven every morning has been very, very accurate. It's what's left us to know which path they needed to run, where to try to push and pull. But right now, the reservoir has started to recover. We've still never gone back as long as we were in June when that first deal hit us. To be this kind of year, it's, it's pretty amazing to see how that system has held up.
In your wildest dreams, Floyd, Emmett. Of course, you wouldn't even wish it upon us to test our, to tax our system like we taxed it this year.
I don't want history to repeat itself.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
I think it's a good wake-up call. I mean, I hope that like the conversation, what's that called? What's your committee called? The Advisory, the Final Advisory Committee? Looks at, looks at ways to, you know, give people examples of how to use land, standing, it doesn't take so much work.
On that vein, specifically on the landscaping, I wonder if that's enough where to start and look at our landscape ordinance. It's kind of that group with it.
Also, I was hoping maybe a PIB would let us, like then, you know, some of their landers bring some beautiful examples.
We've put in a couple of landscape demonstrations on city properties. They're probably not as big as they should be to be effectively noticed, but we'll make available any of the city properties for them.
And I think it'd be a really good public pride and partnership because, you know, local nurseries, it would seem to me we'd want to help, would want to do that to show off what they can do.
And put that turf into it.
Yeah.
Like at the car lot. But that's what the committee, yes. Wait a minute, that command speaker. Man's words.
You want to add one comment to Jim's opinion? The flexibility that you saw in May break is what our crews, whether it's water production, transmission, treatment, or distribution, have been doing all summer to make this work. Those crews, it's just admirable what they've been through and how they adjusted the operational system to maximize that input and accomplish what we've accomplished in those three months to get us where we're at. So crews have a lot of responsibility in our success.
Well, make sure they know that they're preaching.
We will.
And intermediate out there again.
We would have got through the summer without, I mean, without disaster.
Like I said, everything continued to work.
Okay, next. Mayor? That is it. In the end of today, we do have items for closed session. If you would like, you also have time should you choose for the.
Might I ask it, how many commissioners are going to attend the memorial shoot Sunday morning?
I don't know.
Everybody coming?
I don't know yet. It depends on company that we may have been up here.
Jim, you can go.
When you don't do anything.
It's an exercise in humble.
I'm gonna go if you come with first bet.
It's an exercise in humble.
Any break?
No, a break.
Shall we do a quick, quick break, and then we'll come back and.
Yeah, I like it too good.